Utility grant that we put in for and we got last fall. We've been working on it. We went out for bids for generators that will provide service when the power goes out to our airport. We went out for four quotes. I rejected two because they didn't comply to what we asked for, or actually what Tom asked for. Tom actually did the late work on this. He went out and asked these companies for the generators, for the generators that we need to be able to provide service for our airport. Well, two of them came in and they weren't, they didn't meet our criteria, so they're thrown out. So, just so you guys know, we'll start there. They came in like a twenty-nine thousand, one was twenty-nine, or twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine. And the other one was...
If they didn't meet the criteria, then they had a complete bid because they didn't do it for the whole project.
The electrical component boxes, they didn't give me that?
So, they don't qualify. My account was on board, but they didn't qualify. So, they're automatically thrown out?
Yeah, through the years of me doing that, if they don't, if they don't give me what I'm asking for, it still counts if they reach out, but I don't have to accept them, even if it was, is the best deal. Well, it might be the best deal, but we're gonna have to find another thirty thousand dollars to make components away.
It's not, it's not complete from quite, but we got the quotes, so.
Yeah, so, we got a bid for a propane one. We were looking at propane out there, then we went with diesel. Tom and I discussed this with the diesel, but with it being a diesel generator, we're gonna save money along with it because we already have the fuel and we can buy it at our cost to the camp, to what we already get for our... Well, let Tom, because he knows the terminology more than that, so.
Yeah, my thinking was, if we got the one that was diesel, we could run jet fuel without a problem. It's, it's available by the thousands of gallons out there. We ever got ourselves into a situation where, I mean, it would have to be pretty severe, but, you know, that does give us the ability to run beyond three days without power out there, without doing anything else outside of the airport. It's self-sustained. We can just pump fuel into the tank and go right back to it, so.
Well, that, that's very important, the worst-case scenario, cascade effect or something. We need to keep our airport going, be able to do that, hopefully that way. And the other thing I was concerned, talked to Dave a little bit, was the gelling of the diesel, but that fuel's good for sixty below, I believe.
Yeah, minus sixty-two below.
Yeah, if you can buy an airplane, you can start a generator, so I think we're good there. So, I have no concerns. I think it's why it's good, good thinking for worst-case scenario.
Well, like Tom says, it's all self-sufficient right there. You don't have to reach out. We can get, we're running an issue, we can take care of it right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not renting another tank. We're not having to pay to have a car there.
Yes, with propane, we have an annual fee with propane for the tanks and all that we have to pay.
Well, compared to, we went propane up here, it starts up in the middle of town. It's got propane much, the smells much less than diesel up here in a populated area. Possibly a little quieter too, so this fits the airport much better, in my opinion. Appreciate you guys doing the research because I really was sort of on the propane side of it, and this all makes sense.
So, this all being said, Tom and I recommend the diesel backup generator for forty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
So, we'll act on this tomorrow, Dave. We need a copy of that so we know who we're warden it to. So, we'll act on that tomorrow. Yep. Any other, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, was there any other questions?
Nope, sounds good to me. Dave and I, we've discussed a little bit of this prior. I just, when you get the additional info and stuff just before tomorrow, that'd be great.
Thank you. One more thing, well, you guys done?
Jermaine, take that.
Tom has a little bit of that, Dave, not a big one, a little bit of that, Dave.
Oh, great.
That we're looking at. Then we have to look at a self-service fueling terminal, terminal, because ours is obsolete. I'll let Tom spin that one too, because he's the one that listens to everything.
So, do I have time to do this and then give you the good news too?
So, so, you're saying that your department heads obsolete, is that right? He is over fifty now. Go ahead, Tom, give us the department update.
Okay. First of all, the QT pod is our self-serve system that's out there for the self-service fuel. It, it is, as of June first, it's gonna be completely obsolete. It won't be maintained by anybody anymore. You can't get parts unless they happen to scavenge them off of something. That's gonna put us in a position this summer, if that system goes down again, which it's done four times in the last five years, we're, we'd be without fuel services for three, four weeks. So, it's, it's a pretty major issue if we wait until it fails and hope that somebody has a part for it. They've come out with a new system that, that we can install, but it's about twelve thousand dollars. So, if we're gonna do it, this, this would be the time we need to do it before we end up, we could lose a whole lot more than twelve thousand dollars, you know, over summer. We've got fires and we've got no way to supply fuel.
So, to upgrade it for twelve K, what does that do? That longevity and maintenance and stuff? Being I don't know exactly what it pertains to, what, what does that give us?
It's like a whole new card reader.
It's a whole new card reader system. It's actually, instead of just having a landline that we have to update every two to three weeks, you know, you take that human error portion out, and one of us forgets or something, and this continues to function and it downloads automatically. We have the ability that even if I'm not in the office, I can look on the computer and see what the inventory's doing. And it's got a full support system with it, so, you know, if there is troubleshooting that needs to be done or whatever, we're not paying.
Can it take on the monitoring of the fuel level also?
Yeah, yeah, we can record all that, so we can track how much, how much fuel is being pumped in and out, you know, on a weekly basis.
So, will you still have to stick the tank every day or every?
Yeah, that by law, we have to stick the tank.
You still have to do that, okay.
Yeah, that's FAA regulation, so that has to be done. But, but it does give us, it does break up our time where I'm not having to go download every week and then print that stuff out, audit that, and put it in the books. All that stuff's done electronically, you know, and...
I'd, I'd say that it, it's a perfect time, Gens, that we got the anticipated revenue this year. The sort of expenses we've been anticipating with the solar side of it. I don't know budget-wise where this hits, if we have to do resolution or anything, if we were to say, thumbs up, go do this. But we do have an anticipated revenue. I don't know your line items, if I could cover that. Is this a capital?
We'll have to. Brad, we haven't really looked that deep into yet. We're just kinda gonna let you guys know when we're gonna start doing the planning search.
Well, and see, you have to build on fuel to make money.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, and so...
If it takes us three to four weeks to get the unit here, then it's something that we can't wait too long if we're gonna do it.
And then probably, how many days, put it in, three or four days?
They said same day. I asked them, because they said they literally take the old box, unbolt it with four bolts, plug the power into the same spot that it would have been, and set up the wireless system instead of a telephone line. So, they said within, within twenty-four hours, it'll be up and comfortable running.
So, is there any maintenance, any software cost after this is in, ongoing cost?
There is an ongoing cost, and I'm trying to get confirmation, but I believe it's nine hundred dollars a month, or no, nine hundred dollars a year, sorry, for, for the upkeep.
Yeah, it's nine hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
So, so what, what we could do is consensus with the board, have you get the numbers and bring it back to the board for, basically, I, I think, I don't wanna speak. I see one on the head, I see another one that's got that blank stare, I'm not sure.
Blank stare.
I'm just waiting for you to volunteer me for that.
They, they can get it by tomorrow, and then we can...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can get that by tomorrow. I think I have all that in an email already, so I can print that and then get that.
I'm looking at our budget lady and we're hearing out.
I can say that I know they have a capital budget to handle that because of all of the grant stuff in there. What I'm not sure about is the cash part of it. The cash part of it might, it might require a resolution to support the cash purchase. I think that's clear.
And they will finance it for two years at five percent, so. It's all of their options.
No, no, I know where she's getting.
I know, I know that's, I'm just, no, yeah.
Go ahead and just say no, man.
No.
No, no, no.
We don't need to think about that.
Well, I gave you the option, no. Yeah.
Is it, is it that important you need to have it to us tomorrow, or having time enough to research everything, fully research and bring it to our next meeting? Is it gonna crash in the next two weeks, or are we able to?
Well, I can't guarantee it won't crash in the next two weeks, but, but at the same time, well, I don't want that. If you wanna go for two more weeks, I'll do it.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking you so that you have sufficient time to research everything, work with the budget officer, make sure.
Yeah, that would be my only, so do you have time to go over that?
The only problem is with that is, is that if we wait two weeks, then we gotta wait three more weeks, and it's five weeks. That's putting us knocking on the door of fire season.
And June fifteenth, the aircraft starts going.
Five weeks? Well, now fires season may.
They've already got major fires in our story already.
We already got our first.
I don't know, yeah.
Oh, my God.
I, I don't have a problem. I wanted to make sure that...
I'm just giving you days.
Some ways if we act faster than what we do our research, but if you're comfortable that you'll have all the research done and everything that you need, and all the costs, including the annual cost or the ongoing cost and all that, last thing I wanna do is make a decision, then two weeks, come back and say, oh, we probably shouldn't have done that.
No, no, I'm okay with that, as long as Ann's got time to go over that.
You're the lead, and you're, you're good with that, sir?
And if you want to wait till next meeting, that's fine too. I'm just showing you five weeks where we're at.
So, consensus of the board is basically get together, bring it back to us. If you can get it to us as soon as tomorrow, we could act on it.
Okay, I'll get it for you tomorrow.
Where are you guys, good with it?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay. And you have one more item, sir?
I do.
All right. Your item is, and I guess I probably should do the prelude to this.
Well, I can, I can start.
Okay.
We're, as things are happening with the fairgrounds and the busy year that we're having, the hundred year, you know, there's gonna be a lot of that activity going on, and as me and Commissioner Winters were discussing, it'd be a good opportunity to utilize our man camp for RVs thoughts, for the overflow, for, for the fairgrounds during the hundred year celebration of the fair. So, I proposed to Commissioner Winters, tried to propose to him, I just, we just got to talk about it, and I said, "Well, why don't we use this and let the fairgrounds use the man camp and charge it, whatever the board, the Fair Board decides they wanna charge, but I'm giving them that opportunity to be able to use that for an overflow if needed, so."
And that revenue would be, go to the fairgrounds?
Yes, revenue goes to the fairgrounds. It wouldn't be for us, it would be, the only thing I didn't get to talk to Commissioner Winters about was, we kinda talked to Jeff Mannack about that with Red Rock, maybe utilizing that at some point too, so I think you might should kinda talk about that a little bit, or all this talk about that, because we did.
We, we had offered that up several times. I, there, there people's here this last week, but it's still haven't showed any, any interest. That doesn't mean that when they ramp up, they might show some interest. So, I, you know, we can wait forever and do nothing, or whatever.
I just wanna put that out there.
Yeah, we've always proposed for them to go to private sector first, and I think that's really what they're trying to do in what's the RV place across the road, so I, they haven't predicted bringing in any dorms or anything in, and our man camp there is designed for bringing in dorms, it's not individual hookups. So, the, the positive for the Fair Board, and as you guys know, I've told my Fair Board half a little bit, is, is there is overflow even in a normal year, and this year, we predict with the roundup, having the hundred year celebration, even more overflow. Talked to Ronnie, she's here, is if we were going to do this and charge, it would be dry camp, there's no electric, there's no water hookup there, and that would, there'd be no burden on Dave, other than, or his employees, other than letting Ronnie know where the area was, and then it'd happily manage by the Fair Board during that time. Would it have some uniqueness? Absolutely, but I, I think it would be pretty good, should help out. Every motel's booked right now, every RV's box booked, and with the Chamber doing their, their route, they could also maybe make that as a stop to bring people over to the roundup and the carnival and the fair, so. I think it's got some good possibility to, to help out during that biggest time of the year. The one thing is, is probably should check, I should follow up with Red Rock and make absolutely sure, because we had offered that up, and make sure that they don't have any intentions on that. So, Fox, support?
I think it's great, I mean. And then, and they'll be, it'll be, they just won't pull in there and just pull their campers in, or we'll, we'll mark it off, and it'll be reasonable.
Just paint, like paint spots.
Well, I wanna probably do that, I'll probably just put columns out and say, "This is the area type."
And then, and then Ronnie's gonna worry about where they park. You're gonna say, "This is the area," unless you wanna work all day, but they may do that.
She'll worry about it, she'll tell me, go move, and I'll go talk to her.
Yeah, so, you know, all the parking and everything is a big challenge here in the fair anyways, so. I think we could, you got any concerns or things, Ronnie?
No.
So, Ronnie, do you have something to tell us about, something?
No, why?
She was here just to support me.
I, I heard that the fairgrounds got a fifty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, I can tell you about that.
That'd be great.
That's awesome.
Oh, what are you doing?
Oh, sorry, you guys.
So, it sounds like we're gonna get a department update from, so Dave, let me check with Red Rock, or let me check with Red Rock, and then...
Yeah, I just got to take advantage of that thought, throw it out there.
Yeah, and Red Rock's not gonna take it.
Might as well use it, it's only during that period of time.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, there time for me to give a little bit more of the good news?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's alright.
Yeah, sorry, Tom.
All right. Let the record show that Dave's a challenge to manage as the chairman of the... Go ahead, Tom.
So, we got, April twentieth, we have the, the Airport Flying Club that was developed by Bruce and quite a few of this out there. Bruce Webb, it was the one that was really, the one headed up. We're gonna have a get-together. It looks like, as of right now, we've got permission to, to do the F-15 flyby on that Saturday, so, and we've got quite a few people interested in showing up. We got people from Clamott coming over to, to do some of the, we're doing half-hour airplane rides for, for that and everything, so that's, that's really starting to shape up, so. If there's anything that you guys can think of that is concerned or anything there, I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up as to what was happening.
I wish we were gonna be here.
Yeah.
Because that's kinda college that day, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, what are you doing for outreach, advertising to that, to get people there and get it on our website also, through Melanie?
Yeah, I haven't thought about the website there, but the Chamber's got the certificates for the flights. They're advertising there, we're advertising on the radio, newspaper, and then we're bringing over Airlink, just coming over for their, their medical stuff. They're bringing one of the aircraft over for people to see and kind of understand what they do.
That's awesome.
We've got the Experimental Aircraft Association at Clamott and the Civil Art Patrol. They're setting up a table, and they're gonna bring their cadets, so people can see, you know, even younger kids can see what they could get into there. Possibly, possibly at some point have a R O chapter of, of the Civil Art Patrol over here as well, because that's getting pretty busy over there in Clamott with all of the, the military stuff and everything, so they may be looking at putting one of those aircrafts here, so.
So, you're gonna have booths set up and different things, and people walk by?
Yeah.
Gens, we're gonna put Todd on the spot.
Go for it.
BLM, Forest Service and stuff like that, dude. Wouldn't it be bad for, on the firefighting side, if they had people up on it, set up the booth so people understand the impact that, that airport's so important to the fire?
Yeah, I think Bruce talked to, I'm not sure who he talked to about that, but somebody out there at the heli base, I think, was talking about.
So, you already talked to him?
Having a presence.
It's, it's a key part of our, our area. Very good.
Chad Bergerin would be the person to talk to. He's our unit aviation officer for Forest Service and BLM.
Yeah, he's the one I talked to on last year, basically.
Yeah, so I'll confirm, I'll confirm Chad to that, so Bruce was communicating with him, he had a hell of a name, but... So, that's, that's kinda kicking off here pretty quick, and then, you know, we're, we're in the process of building our second airplane right now, so the airplanes are gonna be available for people to rent and everything. It just kinda adds that much more to getting the airport to grow. We've got five students right now that are looking to get their license, and I think we've already signed three, three guys off. There are ready pilots that don't have airplanes. They've already been signed up or approved to fly these aircrafts. So, and one aircraft's already been bought by one of those individuals, so growth could...
Are they full-size or light sport, or?
They're full-size Cessna, Cessna one-seventy-two, and then the one we're building is actually a Piper Pacer, so it's a four-place tailwheel aircraft, so there'd be some options.
So, is there any player, any function that KCC could help with this, or be a part of this, or their presence in our community?
Um, I will check. We already had that conversation with Bruce, but I don't remember hearing back from him on that. So, I'll check and see if that's something that, that he got any word on.
You know, especially where you're building, you already have that many interests and everything. It could be that there's something that KCC could complement, you know, I don't know how all builds have become a pilot, but there could be something there to complement that.
Yeah, they, they've got their, their pilot program over, Clamott Falls already developed, and when I talked to them last year, they were still in the process of getting that organized because they had a bunch of paperwork for the military training, so the guys could use their GI Bill to learn to fly. So, I haven't touched base with them for a few months now, but, yeah, that's something that should probably be taken care of there. And then, probably the, the biggest thing is, we're gonna, our, our federal and state grants are in process of starting. I mean, our federal, money for the taxiways and the, or the road jamming beacon and the parking areas, that should start construction on June first, so we should have all of that happening. And the way we're setting it up is the fuel island and around the maintenance hangar there and all that parking is about a three-week process, so we should see, possibly by the first, we had the first week in July, all of the KDB done, it's critical to the fire suppression and everything, so. I'm hoping that that stays on schedule and we're able to get that done, and then, then the aircraft will be supported, and then they can do the rest of the, the, you know, the updates that they've got left, the rest of that can start to be done without interfering with fuel sale or, or the firefighting at that point, so.
Very good.
That is exciting to finally, finally get to hear late, but we finally got the federal dollars and got that all approved, so. So, now we can quit here, and once I'm gonna get done, is that gonna be?
Very good work, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, you bet. So, Todd, we're gonna hear from Ronnie real fast, do you got time enough?
Perfect.
Ronnie, you're up, come up front here. We have to jump camera, you know, this is a big thing.
Which side?
Which side's a good side?
This side.
Uh, so I should go on the other side?
Okay, so, I didn't finally give you an update, but yeah, it's super exciting. So, we have a, we received funds for the first phase of the master plan for the whole fairgrounds, and it addresses civil engineering, it addresses the design concept. I'm so excited. It was a fifty thousand dollar grant through local economic opportunity funding grant, and we did it through Stowe. Because really, she has the connections, and so it's, we have the architects.
You worked with Betty on that one, right?
Yeah, yeah, I sent her all the narrative and the outline for the plan and all that kind of stuff, and she put it into form and sent it off, so. Yeah, no, it was really, it was a quick turnaround. We had three or four days, I think, to turn it around, so. And I had gotten denied on another grant earlier, so it was kinda all together, so it went really slow. The architects, we have our first kickoff meeting next Tuesday night. They'll be here all day Tuesday for the onsite review, condition, kind of assessment that they do. They'll meet with the board Tuesday night, and then I'm setting up interviews for all day Wednesday with, they call them stakeholders, I call them interested parties. So, I have a food vendor, the outdoor vendors, the roundup.
Gun show?
Thank, no, not the gun show.
Well, is that a secondary one, I thought?
Yeah, that's a secondary.
Oh, that's historical.
Yeah, historical village, because it's kind of a set feature there.
Okay.
So, anyway, I'm planning all the interviews for the Wednesday, and then they head back, and then we start the process. So, I am super excited.
There, there'll be more than one interview process?
Oh, yes.
On the first one, that'll be the key stakeholders, whatever, then the second one will be some, Chamber will be on the second phase.
Yeah, yeah, Chamber and, and the larger users, like, well, Derby's gonna be in on the first one because they're kind of, they're all mixed up with Roundup, but I think it would be kinda nice if we had some kind of, in the whole new plan, a place for monster trucks, Derby, that kind of thing that necessarily isn't in the arena maybe. I don't know. I don't know, I just, it's time to think out of the box and I just think this is the time.
This is such a big thing because of, there's so many people that have their own ideas and think this is the way the fairgrounds should be, or whatever. This'll have a design professional come in, talk to all the different organizations, stakeholders and everything, and help format a plan for us in the future of really what the fairgrounds should do. Just trying to figure out parking alone, and whether we should have a gate here, whether we should have vendors over here, and, and everybody gets in their own silos. It's been a challenge for a lot of years, so myself, I'm very excited about this.
Yeah, I'm really excited too. And we went with LRS Architects up in Portland, because I, well, not because, but I've taken a couple workshops with him through the OFA stuff, and he's done specifically eighteen different fairgrounds. And in fact, Clamott just signed with him too to do other feasibility studies for over there. There's, he's just working with a whole lot of Oregon, Nevada, and Idaho, and that's kind of their expertise, and so that's what I wanted. Well, that's what the board chose, the direction, no.
Is there a board? I didn't know there was a board.
Yep.
That was a sarcastic comment, sorry.
Sorry, no, it's good. But, so, yeah, I am extremely, and we have a chair lady who we got a contract through the Ford Family Foundation. We got a grant with for grant writing services, or, yeah, kind of grant writing services. Anyway, she's going to step in and pick up the second, the second part of, this was phase one. The second part of, of the phase is gonna be mostly the conceptual part, the architectural part of it, and so we're gonna try and get that funded, so it can just breeze right through and be done by the end of the year.
It'd be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, it will be. I'm so excited. And we have our gun show coming up, don't miss it, thirteenth and fourteenth.
Of April.
Of April, yeah. And OHA this weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Yep.
I'll be at both of them.
And I think that's about it.
All right, you're out of here.
Okay, thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. And we have a Fair Board meeting tonight, I thought.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yes. Hey, Coco.
Come on up, Todd, I assume I'm next?
Yes, you are.
You're next. Unless Garrett wants to.
You wanna testify? So, I guess first I wanna start just by saying thank you to Melanie and the board for being a little bit flexible with my time. I had a meeting this morning, of course, so ran a little bit long, so appreciate that. So, I'm kinda here to let you know about a, kind of a agreement that's kinda moving forward in Clamott County. It doesn't necessarily have any direct impacts to Lake County, but potentially could have some secondary impacts. So, I just wanna make sure everybody's kinda hearing what's going on and is kind of aware of the situation. So, you may not be aware, you know, my office in Clamott County, the Clamott Falls BLM office, has a large portion of O and C lands, so all of those O and C lands essentially are west of Highway ninety-seven. And for several decades, the BLM has had an agreement. It's kind of gone back and forth between an agreement and a contract with the Oregon Department of Forestry to do fire suppression on those ONC lands in western Clamath County. And that agreement also covers all of western Oregon, all of the BLM lands in western Oregon. So other than the Medford District, the BLM lands in western Oregon have very little BLM fire suppression apparatus. They've only a few engines available over there. So we've had this longstanding agreement with ODF. It's worked out very well for both of us. There have been some recent changes that have kind of led us down a little bit of an impasse. And so those changes started in 2017. BLM paid into that contract and agreement on a per acre basis. So it was based on the amount, just like all of ODF's other land that they protect, it was based on the amount of land that they protect. One of the first things that happened was, and it was really outside of their control, but the BLM was removed from the large fire protection agreement that ODF had. And so therefore BLM had to pay on top of what we were already paying for contracts. We also had to pay for any initial large fires. So that makes the cost extremely high. When that agreement was redone last year in 2018, the cost went from about $4.7 million for that statewide contract to about 8.8 million in one year. So we paid that last year. But we also entered into a one-year agreement instead of a longer term agreement so that we could kind of take a step back and look at what our other options were. When BLM, when we stand up a new fire station somewhere, we basically have a model that they look at, that they look at the protecting area, they look at the type of fuels that are there. They look at all of those aspects that go into costs associated with firefighting. And then that spits out a cost. This is what you should expect to protect this piece of ground. And so when they run that model for western Oregon, it comes out in the neighborhood of about four, four and a half to five million dollars. Last year, BLM was able to beg, borrow, steal money from the fire programs from other states in order to pay for this agreement for western Oregon. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that again. Our national offices said that's not going to happen again. And so what that means is for especially those ONC counties on the west side, that money's got to come from somewhere. So realistically, that means other programs that are not fired, which potentially could be ONC timber, it could be any other programs. They're going to make up the difference in cost.
Thank you, Brad.
To pay for that ODF agreement. So for, from our aspect for BLM, it's kind of a really big deal. You're talking about making up a $3 million in cost, even though that's potentially spread over several different programs. You're kind of robbing from Peter to pay Paul. So, so where does that put us?
Well, that doesn't fund an incident either. That's just.
That is just what we would consider preparedness.
Yep.
Okay, so that is just your stand-up costs for fighting fire for the first 24 hours.
Without no fire actually ever happening.
With, well, with no fire actually happening, yes. Yeah. I mean, we know we're going to have some fires. We know it's going to happen.
But that's just.
That, that basically pays for what we call initial attack suppression. So for the first 24 hours, when we do get fires of initial attack, if that fire is a small lightning fire and it's put out in 24 hours, it's paid for. If it goes beyond initial attack, then, then we begin paying outside of the agreement for additional suppression. Last year, we spent about $60 million suppressing wildfires in western Oregon. Not only part of the agreement, I think that was in addition to the agreement. So, so for us locally with our statewide budget, this impacts us pretty greatly because we, we have to make up that difference. The, the national office is going to pay us what our model says we should be spending. We have to make up the difference elsewhere. So our partners at ODF are very valued partners and we don't want to leave them in the lurch. And so kind of what we've been working on is a transition plan. What we envisioned with this western Oregon plan is a five-year transition. And so rather than saying, you know what, we're done next year, you guys are paying out on your own, we're going to do our own thing, we know that's not going to work. It's going to leave everybody in the lurch with wildfire season and stuff approaching. That, that leaves huge holes for risk, right? And so we want a kind of a smooth transition. So beginning in next year, as of June 30th of 2020, those lands, Clamath Falls, we got the distinction of going first. Great. As of June 30th, 2020, Clamath Falls ONC lands will be protected by BLM. So this will be the last year that Oregon Department of Forestry receives funding from BLM for that 55,000 acres in Clamath Falls. So that way that transition plan is intended to work is at least a year ahead of time, BLM will identify which acres they expect to come out from under that agreement. And then we'll work with our ODF counterparts to try to figure out a plan for protection.
So I probably have a little bit of disconnect here. Sure. It's not taxation, it's a fee that's collected through the taxing office. What happened, because Oregon Department of Forestry receives those dollars for protecting those lands, where does that money go if you're going to be protecting the BLM lands?
So let me make sure I understood your question.
So ONC lands, don't they get that fee for Oregon Department of Forestry protection?
They, they do not get anything from the state. They just totally BLM funded, totally federal funded.
Okay. So I thought private lands there.
So other private lands, the way ODF protects fees, and I'm not the expert on this, I'm taking a big rate solid as kind of open dust and whip you here to answer some questions. They're, they're partially tax based and they're partially funded by dollars that come straight from large private landowners. And none of the ONC lands, the 55,000 acres that BLM has in Clamath County receives any of that funding.
Okay. All right. That's clearly, that goes out.
Because this didn't like the original contract with the ONC lands, didn't they contract with the BLM to begin with?
Well, you have to be going back a long ways.
Well, the ONC lands are actually BLM lands. So it's your responsibility to do the part.
That's, that's what I meant. I mean, the railroad actually gave BLM jurisdiction.
Well, BLM would have had, I think it would have been the opposite. I think we would have been given, because it would have been. Yeah. I probably, it's on the point in time. You're probably going back into the twenties and thirties. You'll, you'll hear that this agreement between, between BLM and ODF has been around for like 105 or 110 years. And I don't, I don't know the total history, but it's been around a very long time. I mean, that's, that's considerably longer than the BLM has been an entity. So it probably goes back to the general land office.
I guess in short, the ONC lands, instead of being covered by ODF, that they're covered by UGS. They're private lands covered by UGS.
Another BLM land, the BLM lands that you've been paying in ODF to, to the fire.
Correct. So let me back up and explain what ONC lands are. So ONC lands was originally, you know, when, when the United States made the purchase of everything out west, that became federal land, right? And so in order for that land to be settled, the United States government made deals with private companies, railroad companies, road construction companies to build roads in exchange for land. And so that's why, you know, the, all the checkerboard on Hart Mountain, that's the, one of the roads that was constructed under one of those agreements with private company. And that's how they did it. When you see that checkerboard pattern in land ownership, there's typically, when those roads or railroads were constructed, every township of land, so six miles by six miles, every township that that road or railroad touched, those companies were given every other section of land, ones where miles a section, were given every other section of land within all those townships that those roads touched. So how did the ONC lands come about? So there was Oregon California Railroad Company, who was contracted by the federal government to bring a railroad into southern Oregon. There was also another company that was supposed to build a wagon road from Goose Bay to, I believe, kind of the Roseburg area to tie in the railroad, separate, separate company. Both of those agreements, the other agreement was that the company with ONC lands, the railroad company, was then supposed to turn around and sell those lands with prices set by the federal government to settlers in order to get the land settled. There was some kind of a breakdown in that and it didn't happen. There were some, my understanding, some shady deals made. I believe it was in the 1930s, there was an act that went through Congress that basically said, ONC Railroad Company, Goose Bay Wagon Road Company, you guys didn't fulfill your end of the deal, we're taking the land back. So that land came back into ownership of the federal government. At the time, it came back to the general land office, which later became the BLM. When that act was created, the ONC act, it was, that's when all of the, when that land came back from that private company, that is when all of the stipulations for that land being used for production, whether it's range land or timber land, that's when all of the stuff was built in for some of those receipts to go to the counties. It's when all of that separate management was built in. So those ONC lands have to be managed in a very different manner than the rest of our BLM lands because of the ONC act. There are certain things we can and can't do there. And so all we're talking about here is how is fire going to be fought on those, wildfire going to be fought on those lands? And up until now, that's been through an agreement with Oregon Department of Forestry. That's going to be changing. Part of the reason I'm bringing this to you guys, even though it's way over there in Clamath County, is Oregon Department of Forestry is one unit, Clamath Lake Unit. BLM is one unit, Clamath Lake Unit. And so because of that, there is potential for us to be moving some of our resources around in order to cover this extra land in Clamath County. We've, we've requested additional firefighting resources through BLM. We've requested two additional fire engines and an additional supervisor. At this point, we don't really know what's going to happen there and what kind of additional resources we get. So it may entail us moving some, some resources around a little bit. We're still sitting down with Oregon Department of Forestry going through what our firefighting efforts may look like as a joint firefighting force in the future. I don't know if you're all aware, for the South Central Oregon Fire Management Partnership, we all consider ourselves one large firefighting force. So that's Forest Service, Bureau of Land Management, the National Park Service, Oregon Department of Forestry.
Refuge.
The US Fish and Wildlife Service, all of those, there's a group of us managers that are all kind of the governing board that sits over that. We all do things in the same fashion. So that when, when we're in the middle of fire season and a fire dispatch goes out, we rely on the closest forces concept. It doesn't matter what color engine shows up. We all have the resources, we contribute to this partnership and the closest forces go to those fires.
And you include RFPs and RFPAs in that?
RFPAs are a little bit different.
Yes.
So, so RFPAs are a great resource, but we don't dispatch RFPAs. They are their own entity. They decide when they're going to go and when they're not going to go. And we don't have the ability to dispatch them. We've provided a tremendous amount of training and equipment to RFPAs because it also is part of our partnership. But because we don't dispatch them, they, they kind of want that autonomy to be their own entity. So we don't necessarily include them in that, that leadership directive, but they are a huge part of our firefighting force. Absolutely. They've, when, when we have one of those huge lightning storms come through and we've got five times as many fires as we have fire engines, they really save our bacon. They've done a new one.
Dale, Dale, while at Riley Junction, he's, he said that you guys have worked really well together.
And so. All, all of our RFPAs, they're all a little bit different, right? Everybody's a little bit different personalities and everything else. But, but for the most part, the RFPAs that I deal with here in Lakeview District are great to work with. There's a little bit of a learning curve usually. Usually when you stand up a new RFPA, they don't understand why they have to wear nomads. They don't understand all the safety regulations that are in place. Once they get more training and experience, that typically starts to change.
Do you find there was any issues with incorporating them into the ICS system and getting them accustomed to following, you know, procedure and orders once the ICS system is established?
Yeah, we, we really haven't had any issues with that. I think they've, they've done tape really well.
Good.
You know, the, the ones we work most with here is, were valley for the most part, they've been around for a while. They're great.
Integrated pretty well with the system.
Yeah. They're, they're great at letting us know what's going on. The, the more time goes on, the more equipment we're able to get them. So now they actually have radios that will work on our communications bands and, yeah, just a great resource.
Well, we have such a, you know, here, where this, I'm very proud of where our agencies are at. You need to know that. My mind's sitting here thinking western Oregon fires and stuff over there compared to range land here, but your men and women are trained in Oregon's forest also because of the partnership we have here. So that's not a problem. Engines and everything are basically universal either way, whether it's forest or range land.
And, and because of the standardization in the federal process, that's what makes this partnership so great? Is because if a Fish and Wildlife Service engine or even a Crater Lake National Park engine, type six engine shows up out here on the desert fire for one reason or another, it's standardized. They have all the same equipment for the most part. Sometimes the tools are a little bit different, but, but they're all standardized.
So naturally, you know, the reason why you give an update is we're all very protective of our own areas and that's the reason why you're giving us that update. And so is there anything that's aboard politically we can ask congressmen or senators for support on the BLM or others where you guys are, cannot get into politics? Is there anything that we need to do, Todd? Because the last thing we want is for first and foremost, firefighting safety, we want our, our people to be safe and, and no loss out there. Another thing is, is there a resource out there? We don't want to lose our, our resource because of our, our amount of coverage being limited by, the resources go in other places. You know, I hate to get into this, but by the movement of different things, and I'm going to go into no man's land, Wilderness Characteristics, 1.6 million acres, they just now said that that's not just range land anymore, that is high valuable land along with sage grouse over there. That is high valuable land. So if it's so valuable, we have to protect it. We definitely want the fire engines and the crews here to protect that. What has now has been pushed to this level of value by today's rules and regulations. And so our, a lot of our lands are much different as far as I'm concerned because of it's dictated down to us and you, that these are at this value because of endangered species, there's wilderness characteristics, or there's an RNA or an ECE. Might even go further where the pill payment needs to go up higher because these are such valuable lands. But anyways, it's an argument out there that we need to, you need, we need the, the protection for those mines. You know, we'd lose a whole bunch of core one or whatever it is on sage grouse habitat out there. That, that hurts.
Yeah, absolutely.
So anyways, I'll get off my family.
Yeah. So to kind of answer, answer your question, you know, what can you guys do? I, I think at this point, you know, we are, for this coming fire season, we are paying ODF to go ahead and protect those 55,000 acres. But we're also starting to meet now to figure out what is going to happen a year from now during that transition. And so the one thing we're going to try to do this year is we're going to try to have some of our leadership and when, when possible. have some of our leadership and when, when possible, some of our engine captains begin to shadow ODF for what they're doing and start making those introductions with other private landowners and starting to build that relationship. We're also sitting down with ODF and looking at potential ways that we can again work as a group to protect this landscape and figure out, is there another way to do this without paying them directly to do it? We do have a separate offset agreement with ODF for some lands in Climen County where it, it makes sense. Essentially, the way an offset agreement works is we say, okay, ODF, you have, we have all these little parcels of BLM scattered out here, you guys are doing all the protection around them, those parcels add up to ten thousand acres. What if we were to take some of the responsibility over here where we have a big chunk of BLM land and pick up ten thousand acres of ODF land that we will then be responsible for? And we compare the number of fires that have occurred on those landscapes and try to balance it by the number of fires in order to see if the workload is balanced. And so, there are, there are options for those kind of things. We're, we're going to start working through that in this transition plan with ODF, but I, I don't know where those conversations are going to go. So, I guess, I guess at this point, I would just ask if you guys, there, there are already rumors starting to float around in the community that, that BLM's abandoning the agreement, that we're not going to be good partners, we haven't asked for any additional resources, we're going to be protecting those west side LONC lands. I, I got a letter from a group that's basically saying, well, you're going to protect those lands from Lakeview. Your engines are going to sit in Lakeview and you're going to drive to Climen if you get a fire. Those things simply aren't true. So, I guess, if, if you have questions, if concerns come up, would you let me know? You all have my phone number.
Well, real positive about the situation is Todd, as the group, the organization that you have here, to build, to brainstorm this, to work this through, to follow the work, your resources have to go to where the need is. And, and some of those decisions are made both by a phone call during fire season, as you well know. The concern is, is with the group, with the Forest Service, with ODF, the Fish and Wildlife, and everybody here is, if some of your resources are going to be relocated over there, that puts more burden on that limited amount of partnership we have here. So, as a group, you guys will figure that out, but it does put a burden on, burden on your team, that we all work. And I, I believe if you put us, you guys up against any place in the state, we, you guys do good here.
One, one of the other bigger issues that we have is just getting capable engine captains. We have probably two fire engines that we may not be able to staff this summer because we can't find anybody with the qualifications it takes to be an engine captain. And so, we're putting our head together now, reaching out to other agencies to see if we can fill the seats of those engines in order to have additional resources.
And that's not unique to just your agency, it's private sectors across our nation right now.
Absolutely.
It really is, so.
Yeah. So, you brought up wilderness characteristics, so can I throw one more thing in there?
What we can talk about, yeah, I'll throw it out there.
Yeah. So, one of the ideas, when, when I did the last presentation for the commissioners here, kind of on our wilderness characteristics stuff, when we, we asked for some additional public input, one of the ideas that came in line was the public, a couple of members of the public had approached me and said, we'd really like a comment on BLM documents and BLM NEPA, but we really don't understand how. We, we have a difficult time putting those comments together. And they asked if there was any way that the BLM could provide a public workshop in order for the public to better understand how to provide good, meaningful comments. And so, I took that to heart. We've kind of planned two different sessions. Each session would be about four hours. We're going to start advertising for those here pretty quick. We, we tried to coincide that workshop, so it would be at the beginning of the release of our resource management plan, the beginning of that public comment period. So, it'd be something that they could not only learn how to do it, but they could take those skills and put them to use right away so they don't get rusty. Right now, we're, the dates we're looking at are the end of May, last day of May, and the first day of June. I checked with several of the deputies, looked at the sports calendars, checked with the chamber, those days seem like they're okay. We're going to probably try to do an evening session here in Lakeview and then on Friday, and then a midday session in Paisley. So, hopefully, those will be well received and.
So, you'll do like one, the last part of May, you'll do that one here, and then the first part of June, you'll do that one in Paisley?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it's going to be May thirty-first to June first, but we're, we're this close to getting those dates.
So, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, if, if, or if it's big enough. You need a neutral area that's open a lot of times.
Okay.
Just schedule.
That's why I was kind of wondering if downstairs.
Yeah, yeah, we, we just put a new floor.
I, I got my keyboard call.
Well, depending on the size of your roof, you have both monitors here and stuff, just an option, you know?
Sure.
We went through the community meetings several years ago, and people appreciate that sort of, it puts a different tone on that neutral area.
Yeah, yeah, we were kind of considering to do that. I kind of thought maybe.
But all your resources are there as far as computers and everything, so it's, it's a lot of work. I appreciate that very much.
Sure.
I don't even like saying the word need, but it's so over my head that it's.
It can be pretty overwhelming.
It's, yeah.
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 And so, we're going to, we're going to focus in just on the comment aspect. You know, we'll touch on what NEPA is, why we do it and that, but then we're going to focus in on how people can provide good comments. And we're also going to try to give folks a little bit of a peek, the insight of how the sausage is made once we get comments. What do we do with, how do we analyze? How, and that, and that helps when, when you see how the agency is going to use comments, it helps you formulate your comments. And so, I think all that will be very helpful. I'm, I'm hoping it's pretty well received. I, I reached out thinking other agencies in the BLM or other, other districts in the BLM have done something like this. I haven't been able to find anybody that did it for the public. There's no, I thought maybe we'd have a, a workshop that we could pick up off the shelf, and so, we kind of had to reinvent this from scratch.
You know, there's nothing wrong with being the first, Todd, and, you know, whenever, just, you know, we went through the meetings, if, if people understand it's not here for a meetup session, I think this is here for an educational session, it changes the tone.
Absolutely.
And, and so, I, I compliment you for doing that. Reach, reach out to your Rocky Mountain LCOHA, those organizations also that, that, all those. Questions, anything else?
Do you know if we, if we were to do something downstairs, would it be considered recording the session so that if people could make it, they could be recording? Do you know if that would be capable if we did use the video recorder?
Are you talking about video recording or just voice recording or?
Probably video.
Video? We don't have anything set up to be able to do that. In here, you can type people in.
Okay.
Melanie's expert on that.
So, there's no, no microphone system or anything?
No.
No, but I could put one down there.
Okay, all right.
You, you, you can always invite the press, and then they can put it on their website also.
True. Always invited.
He's pretty hard to work with sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
It's loud and boisterous.
Anything else, of course? I think that's it.
Thank you, Todd.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Todd.
Appreciate the heads up, and as we hear things, we might also guide people that tell them, maybe emotional thought, and it is what's going on.
Yeah, I, I think the biggest, the biggest concern is that BLM was just going to absorb those acres and quit paying ODF to do it, not, not change the way we do business, and we just, we can't do that. And so, I've got a couple inquiry letters I have to respond to already, so I'm just trying to reach out and make sure folks are aware.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Have a good afternoon.
Yeah. All right, so we have, what I see here, three more items to get.
Uh, two, and, oh, my, Budget Resolution Wellness Committee.
I got the check mark on the wrong side. Budget Resolution, we need his hand, still available, and Wellness Committee, who's presenting the Wellness Committee thoughts?
Oh, I think we need the J and M, I'm trying to.
Let's try and get them in here.
Yeah, let's move in.